People would train like that?
We should.
Well, you're the only place we've had to clear that. I'm not sure we have a first.
I don't believe we had a purchase order on it.
I didn't see, I did not see one come through.
That was just because it was, and only because of it, we just did the 500 down to 250. It's a reason it caught my eye and it's just a shade over that at 5:42. And I thought, oh, did we do a PO, did we do a PO for a hotel?
It was probably already taken care of before we did that. No chance.
Okay.
The reservations that...
He's gone out for the last few.
Okay. And he put that on his own card rather than his city card?
Yeah.
But we, since then, we have resolved that and all purchases are made on the city card. They're not being made and being reversed.
He gets, they get $30 a month, I mean, a trip a day.
Yeah.
For their food and whatever. One of my colleagues, he looked it up. He, there was a question on the PDLI.
Oh, was? Okay.
The PDLI, he drinks that because he's very hot, he's, he's, uh...
He's very gatorade.
He gets like Gatorade. They, they, they wasn't going to take it, but when I talked to him, I got a habit. I get so, you know, four out of four.
Sure.
So, everything's cool on that.
Yeah, my, my bigger question was just for the, that it was over $500.
Yeah, that is before.
We didn't do a PO on it and it was on his personal card and kind of wondered about that.
Or the...
Okay. The, the only other question I have was the eagle engraving. What was that? Because it was, it was, I didn't write that number down, or did I?
Eagle engraving, not a...
Yeah, eagle engraving. I think it was for commendations, commendation.
Oh, yeah. They've done that to pass.
Okay.
I thought that was taken care of.
Yes, I suppose with, with, uh...
Jenny.
She's not doing that. And, um, I, I questioned whether it was a necessity or not and which account it should come out of or that it should rightfully come out of general fund. And it is a commemorative bar that goes on their dress, um, clothes.
From when they say buy.
Their dress uniforms.
They already, they've done that, they've had it.
Are we going to do any kind of presentation for them on it? I just, I think they got a commendation.
I know.
Something cool we would do to honor them with that, if that's what we're doing.
I don't know. That's up to them to take one kind of...
I, I made that suggestion to...
On their own duties. Yeah, we talked about it.
To Mr. Story and also to, to Shane Conover. Did that be something that, you know, they, they'd be forward or at least you think if he would come? Which I thought he was going to be here tonight. I told him he was.
Yeah, I know his condition.
Okay.
He'd be working some more days.
That he, that he would list those men because that's something, you know, we should...
Yeah. I mean, if our guys have got commendations, I think that's great. I mean, I think that's...
They're lifesaving commendations. They're just not something that they trade and dream of, you know?
Sure.
Uh, like the deal with the boy that got killed in, in Cris...
Crispr.
One of our guys found him, dug him out, you know?
Yeah, we definitely...
CPR.
I, I, that hit us in a weird way. We def, I, honor, is probably the best word. Probably, I looked up, honor.
CPR, they'd save a couple with CPR.
I just want to say, if I may, I believe that they were honored at, on the fire department's Christmas night.
Yes, were they?
With, with these.
With these?
Up here.
Were they?
So, um, it didn't go without recognition, I'll say that much. And I think it was inappropriate recognition considering what these, uh, commendations are on board were, that we meant.
Okay.
So, if I remember.
I'm not questioning the need or the value of mine. I'm thinking the value, the price of it and where it was being, it was, it was listed under clothing allowance. And I thought that was an awkward place to be. It seems like it's a lot more than a clothing allowance item.
Okay, this is the, this, and it was flagged to me, so I investigated it. And this is what, what I was told is that the past, um, finance commissioner liked to minimize the, the line item. And so, it was put in miscellaneous or in clothing.
Just wait.
And, and so, I asked Lisa to check and see which one she thought was most appropriate. And she put it in. But I thought that it was a, a warranted item to be charged to the general fund.
She, she called me. We talked about it.
Yes.
And I got Jane on the phone and said, we, I want this, I want this straight. You know?
Okay.
However you do it, I don't care, but have we done it in the past?
Yeah.
I, I didn't, I couldn't remember. You know, I know we did one other time.
And it's important that our workers all across the board be recognized and still valued.
I agree. I think keep the morale up. We want to keep their morale up now.
The only, the only suggestion that I would make, and I, and I say this to all commissioners, that you make sure that when any of the bills, that you tell your departments when they're turning in bills, that there's anything that might flag an auditor to have documentation on it. If the documentation comes in with the bill, then, you know, we don't have to call and question. And people sometimes get offended when they're called and questioned. And that's certainly not our intent at all. We just want to be, um, above board.
Proactive.
Accountable with everything. So, just better documentation would help a lot. So, the motions on the floor have been accepted. No one's checked.
No.
No one's checked yet? Okay.
Pay the bills?
The pay bills. Commissioner Garavalia?
What was it, Don?
Yeah, Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Connor? Okay. Okay. So, the next? Now, with that, I just, I'm stat on the bill here. Okay, so the, the payroll and the, in the general fund, out of the general fund is, we paid And out of the water and shore fund, we paid $27,691.71, which makes the total payroll And make a motion that the payroll be approved. Okay. Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
I do.
Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
I'm jumping back to bills. I do have, uh, one more thing that I'd like to, to, to bring up. And that, that is something that we discussed in that, maybe I shouldn't do this, so, an old business. But, um, it's, the last meeting that we had, we talked about a, um, bill that was presented to John H. Crawford and Associates. And it's for a map. And we could get that map free, so we asked them if we could, um, take that back, you know, take that order back, if they would, if they would, um, if they were to refund, cancel that order to that map and refund it. And they graciously did that. And we did get, they returned the check. And so, that check for $3,400 is voided and that's saving to the city of $3,400. And so, I just want to bring that to your attention, about that. Oh, and another thing on the bills, um, Ian, I am so glad that your, your son is doing better and he's home and all that. So, we have a, we've kept all the bills. They're all on the, in the, in the room upstairs. And they're from, let's see, October, November, December, and January. So, they're all there for your attention. And anyone else who has failed to look at any and all of the bills, needs to do so. So, that's it on the bills. So, the next thing, I'm going to move on to the application, applications for sewer adjustments. I have an application for Lindsey M. McGuire at 511 North Street Cannon Street. She had a broken line in her yard. And she even presented the bill where a plumber came in and repaired that line. And I would like to have that one approved. I'll do all the approvals in my motion. The next one would be for Deborah Locke at 616 Jocklin Street. She had a loss occur when a water leak, both inside the house and under the house, um, occurred. The majority, the, the leak was mostly under the house. There is no indication that, that the leak inside the house went in the sewer at all. So, I would like to make, I'd like to approve her leak. She, she also had that bid, um, she had it fixed right away. Both of these, inside and outside, restricted. And then I have one more. This is for Paul Pott at 402 South First in Denton. And his was, um, a busted elbow under the old part of his house. It, so he put, uh, heat tape on it. It froze with the cold weather. He repaired that and put heat tape on it. So, those are the three sewer adjustments. And the dent has been applied for. And I think they all meet the requirements. So, I make a motion that we approve all of those sewer adjustments. Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
And then, the, the last thing that I have, and Commissioner Story would can, um, help me out with this and, you know, may need to, may need to get some information on this or have some information on that. And then, uh, the fire department goes out on hazmat calls. And when they go out on hazmat calls, they are, they are, um, given funds or they pay for those hazmat calls.
Hazmat and expectation.
Hazmat and expectation. And so, um, Chief Conover would like to take the hazmat money that is currently being put in general fund and move that to restricted fund. And I, my motion tonight is going to be that we, um, have our attorney work on a resolution for this. But in this resolution, it needs to only restrict the surplus of, the surplus funds, though minus any expense to the city. Shane has turned in one bill that's for, that, or one item that he has collected for, that $3,131.31. And out of that, he has listed $915.51 for the labor. But, but it definitely costs the city labor. I mean, we've got materials, equipment, and everything.
That's what we're, we're doing. We're, we're putting it in a fund where they can take it out of that and it will come out of general fund. We have to, we have to re-buy it, it will come out of general fund and come out of that fund. Or if we have to repair a dog's life, it'll come out of that fund, not the general. That's what we're using for. But we're paying the, the, the fireman's wages back.
Okay, the fireman's wages would be coming, coming back. Uh, what about the percentage of, the, the cost of the truck and fuel and all of that?
That's, 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 I don't see how you could, uh, count the fuel. I, I don't know how the police do it when they do it in pound fun.
Okay, well, we, we can work...
You want to take the last, because you guys need to work it out?
Well, what I, what I'd like to do is, is, you know, very soon that we work on this, I'd like to have it done before that.
I, I would need the information.
Right, you have to have the information.
When I talked to Lisa about it, they wasn't upset about the fuel, the truck. So, really, the, the stuff that's being used belongs to the city.
Okay.
So, we're just trying to keep it where we can get our own instead of taking it out of the general fund.
Okay. So, can, can we just have a motion tonight that we, to approve, approve our attorney to work on this resolution as...
You can't work on something you don't know what you're working on.
As we present with the information.
It would be like, it, it's just like the police department and their PDLI fund. They take the money to put it there. And their impound fund, they take their impound fund. They need, they need something. I know Dennis used it quite a bit. Had him take the money out of the impound fund instead of out of the general fund. I don't use that quite a bit. And they didn't use it.
How did you have a motion to approve moving forward with a, a resolution when the terms are provided to the attorney? I think that would be fair to go for.
Okay, I make that motion. When the terms are provided, we are giving the city attorney the, the permission to work on this resolution.
When the terms, yeah, when, when the terms are provided, yes.
Well, what terms? Pretty much, what, what terms?
Well, we'll have, we'll have to sit down and see how the police department does their and...
They, they, they don't, they don't pay back everything. Their officers don't send their, their salary back yet because it's minimal. We might be able to interstate two dollars.
Okay, well, we're going to have, I mean, this is anything, this is anything we're going to be able to do at the table.
No, no.
We're just going to have to do this.
We got to do this.
You, you and I, Lisa, we'll have to sit down and see how to do this and, and present it at the top.
I agree, but I don't think, I don't think, uh, we didn't, Lisa and I didn't discuss the part, uh, she thought just the, uh, payroll part for the department. And that's, that's the department that's at the station too, so, you check on that.
Commissioner Garavalia? Yes, Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
And that is all I have here.
Gee, thank you very much. State Attorney, uh, on that pitch.
Mayor, I don't have a gap, Lisa, there are a couple there. Are you, if you want me to address those, uh, invoices for the airport, if you want me to address a couple of property on, uh, East Main.
Once you just set that up to do it.
In your package, uh, you're going to see a couple of their invoice payments separately. One is, uh, they're both with IDOT Division of Aeronautics. One is referred to as Attachment Gene. You'll see that. That is for $30,237.80. That is called a cost plus fixed payment invoice. It's the standard format that's approved by the L department, Transportation Division of Aeronautics. This is in reference to the building in the new Adnan building. So, we need a motion to approve payment of that invoice.
Make the motion that we approve the payment of the, the invoice. For all my department's expectations.
It's called the cost plus fixed payment invoice. Miss Clark, so that's ordered properly. I mean, just so she sets that together.
Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
The next one we have, uh, you'll see in your package, is another one of an IDOT vendor invoice. Uh, this is, uh, referred to as a, uh, IDOT barrel contracts agreement, uh, for the payment type. This is for the design project value. This is for $30,270.66. And again, this is an, and I have to see, uh, approved vendor invoice from the Department of Aeronautics. We need a motion to second, to approve that as well for the same project. Can you say, Mayor? One second.
Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story? Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
Mayor, the last thing that you have under see, we have previously given, uh, the, uh, tip administrator, zoning administrator authorities to move forward with the possible purchase of the real property located in 202 East Main Street. Uh, Mr. Garavalia has done his due diligence on this and has, um, had the appropriate inspections and work completed and has an opportunity to move forward. We just will need a motion tonight to allow, uh, Mr. Garavalia to move forward to enter into a purchase agreement, assuming that the seller would agree to the standard buyer-seller cost that is traditionally provided along with the, uh, traditional terms as far as what is transferred over. So, we need a motion to allow him to move forward with that.
I make the same motion. Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
And that is 202 East Main. That's for, and we're going to make a party about that. No, possibly. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Garavalia?
I think I heard you say, we have a standard purchase agreement, buyer-seller expenses, progress of the tax and...
Everything, just the standard terms is traditionally provided, we discussed previously.
So, we need to, maybe we look at this agreement and modify it.
Okay, sounds good.
So, I didn't write it, they did.
Right.
Okay. I'll, I'll get working on that tonight.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, ladies. Uh, on Park D, is, uh, discussion of approval of placing Wounded Warrior Parking Signs. I've got to apologize, I've had a cold for the last week or so, I can't like it. The Wounded Warrior are the people stung back from, uh, the wars in Iran and other parts of the country that's against them. And, um, a lot of these people have lost land, so... If, if that respect, I think that we should, even though parking is tight, that we should put these parking signs in strategic locations in the city and, um, make it easier for the Wounded Warrior to park and get around. So, that's something that I'd like to discuss. And if there's any questions, feel free to ask. But this is very important. I don't believe everybody, if the situation where, um, these people have given vital parts of their life and, and I think this was small criticism to them.
Gets good news.
Give me a comment, please, if you really want to...
Sure. Um, the, the initial thought was, is the adjacent lot, not, obviously, on the square, especially at Old Olive and Cheating. Then the question just becomes, how many do you, how many do you offer? And I, I don't, I don't even begin to wrap my head around that. I know that we have those folks, I know that we need to honor those folks. My question would be, how many would be, should the council consider? And then we're going to get them again. So, I, I don't question the value of them. I'm just more wondering the specific details. I need some more sites, just need to dig it through that.
Probably need to take a drive around, look.
I tell you one good thing that you might be able to do is call down to the VA and say, out of the percentage of ex-mountain citizens, what percentage remain under the city? And like I said, they say, well, we got 12 to 2. So, you know, like, uh, one of our state parking spots would be, there's news. So, you know, it would be good.
Yeah, and, I'm just thinking, but that's in a larger area than just Denton. So, that's what I'm trying to think of, how many?
Well, yeah, you should break it down with statistics and...
Can they break it down just, I just...
Because, because that's right.
We have a little VA, we did, uh, contact, uh, here at, uh, where at the current, in the Department of Human Health and Services.
Yeah, Rob's in charge.
Yeah. We should break it down, we have a first half and a, and be able to, to change that in a minute.
See, we can, we can revisit that at later, maybe.
Yeah, just so we have more specifics, because if you figure there's a, the cost involved and all those, and just figure out what the dollars and cents of it are, we're talking about, like...
See, we can, we can revisit that at later, maybe.
Okay.
So, we need to, we need to look at it off the table. We need to, like, to know, to take it, uh, to come back and...
Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Yes.
In the four and a half years I've been mayor of Benton, uh, of course, you can tell I'm a gentleman because I'm at Commissioner Perkins' address. So, I'm expecting the same results from him, that, that I won't be interrupted on a street. I ran for two terms as mayor, I won by landslide votes each time. So, that, that makes me think that I'm popular. I'm a gentleman. Anybody comes in my office, any commissioner comes in my office, gets the utmost respect. I don't go around bullying people, I'm 73 years old. And, I mean, I'm humored to think that in my lifetime, that I would be considered a bully, so, that's why I'm founded. And then, as a mayor, you, you, you spend your time, and the commissions we have here, generally speaking, work a lot of hours. I mean, it's, uh, I came back this afternoon at 3 o'clock, I hear Lee was in here today, Donnie was in here today, Kathy was going over the bills, she does that with great care. Thank you. And we were, we were talking. And, uh, to be mayor 24/7, you, you go to the milk store and people, hey, Mayor, I hate to bother you, but, you know, go ahead, yeah, let's go on. Go to the ballgame, watch some ballgame, here comes somebody. I, I know that as mayor, that I want that to happen. That this is why I'm mayor of Benton. I want people to come and talk to me. I feel phone calls, taking access and verify it, day in, day out. So, when, when I make a decision about a certain situation, I have to be, I have to be perfectly exact in what I do. Or I get a lot of grief. So, when I was informed that we did have a, a situation, I'm the type of guy who goes out and I take photos, you know? Very simple. And if there's infraction that needs to be taken care of, we take care of it. We don't overlook it. So, this is exactly what happened. But the water, the water barn is professional, looking out, all these infractions, they'll take care of. The guys are excellent employees, so, it's a done deal. So, the answer that I have is that my popularity and the way I, I handle this council, which is like a family to me, will continue to be the way I'm doing it. Until somebody else can step in, do their job and I'm good. Number 10, Mr. Williams, please.
Mayor, we've got some purchase orders, uh, that we take care of tonight. Two of those, you'll see three in your package, gentlemen. One is for the, uh, cleaning of the heating and air system at 200 for $745.92. We need a motion to approve, and a second to approve that purchase order from RSD 745.92.
I make the motion that we approve the purchase order for the cleaning of the heating and air system at 200 for $745.92. Commissioner Garavalia? Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mesusman?
Yes.
Mayor Connor?
Mayor, then we have two separately, uh, purchase orders for, uh, that's status inspections for the hospital ventilation. One is purchase order 601, um, to Jeff Scher's for $440 for an assessment inspection, uh, 202 East Main. We need a motion to approve that 440 payment.
I make the motion that we approve the purchase order for the, uh, that's...
Inspection.
Inspection, I'm sorry, for $560 for the just shirt, so... Shirt?
We'll accept that as the motion for the $560. That is in reference, uh, to the, uh, what's referred to as the new house bill. We'll, we'll, like, that as the first motion. So, we understand what we're looking at now is actually, we need a motion on the 776. You guys see that one nearby, for $560. Everybody on board with that? We have a second.
I think of that motion.
Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Meschitz?
Yes.
And then the other one, the other purchase order would be the one for four forty, mentioned that's on East Main Street, so we need a motion to act on that as well, for inspection.
I make the motion for a inspection two oh two East Main, about four hundred and thirty dollars.
Mr. Garvalia?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Hey, you all good?
Yes, I got something I want to say. Last meeting, we brought it up to drop our five hundred to two hundred and fifty. I know I'm probably rather dead or something, but I think we done that wrong. I think we should have went to our department heads and got frozen condoms on there, so we did it and opened it, and kind of feel how they feel about it. I don't, I know everyone, but Commissioner Meschitz, Parkman, I've talked to, they would have come and talked to, he has a position on two fifty versus five fifty. I mean, that's...
I believe it would have been met with resistance had we gone to any of the departments anyway, and it was, you know, there's cause and effects, and the cause was items coming in, not being coded, bills coming in, that we didn't know even what department, we could kind of do which department it came from, but it took us so much work on the finance department to try to take care of these matters, that it's just a better way of being in control of our finances and being accountable for it, and it forces more accountability, and it forces the people out in all of the departments to make notations, and for them to get a purchase order, they have to have a reason in life. So then we've got, we know where the money is going, and we're not wondering where, you know, this bill's supposed to be coded, what department this bill's due, and so that was the reason for this, and it's not to create any hardships whatsoever.
There's no hardships, they just think it wasn't done the fair way they should have had their input, that's why we got that department head, they hope they should have their inputs, not only my departments, that's not...
Neither of our departments, you can't rely on anything.
So I just felt we backed young people, just made it our way in and let everybody, even Skinner and...
I had talked to Skinner.
And what's the name, Brad and Craig and Jason, let them decide.
Yeah, it feels like there's too many decisions being made without everybody being in the loop, it's kind of like, it's my way for the highway.
Okay.
Well, it has been brought up in prior, it has been discussed, it has been brought
up for discussion prior to here. No one came to me and discussed, no one came to me and said, I don't want this to happen. So it was brought up for discussion, and then...
And they even received the agenda before with opportunity to have conversations through that part.
That's right, so then at the next committee, or council meeting, is when it was brought up for motion. So it's the opportunity for anybody who was not happy with this, they have the opportunity to come to discuss it.
Mr. Perkins, what hardships, I mean, you mentioned a few, I know, but what hardships can we see that the two hundred and fifty versus the five hundred? You mentioned the fire fight on the go up, you can't predict where they're going to be running.
Mike Andrews went out the other day, him and I talked to Mr. Kraft, they went out the other day and bought some four D computer they needed. What other thing for, actually we can get, we got the S calendar, come this two hundred, I don't know, I was on the side of the building, it's one, two hundred something, thirty-seven, but anyway, he couldn't buy it. Before, they could buy it, now they can't. I don't know what is the emergency, what is, would have been, would have been an emergency to purchase that?
We did discuss that there would be a transition period that would accommodate those types of things.
We never did say what the emergency was. If it was a date of five, they wouldn't remember, say, who would have thought it? And a pair of gloves, well, my partner, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and we got two pair, two pair out, so I was gonna have to wear them.
But in situations like that, all anyone, anyone has to do is come into the office, request a purchase order, and when they make the statement, we really need this now, and then it's to my discretion with the input of broken Lisa, as to whether it would constitute an, and whoever's coming in for the request, as to whether it's an emergency, we need it now, and we understand that there's going to be times, that there's going to be things that's going to be needed. Some cities, you cannot purchase a dollar item without a purchase order, and it's just about accountability.
So it's got a lot of... But if I come to you for two pairs of gloves, you gotta go to the verb, and Lisa says, hey, can I buy these gloves? I thought you was...
It comes down to my decision here. With absolutely the resolution, one hundred percent to whoever's coming in, and, you know, if Mike Andrews would have come and said, you know, this is what we typically get, and with this, with this new restriction of the dollar amount, I can't go get this, I'm sure that would have been approved to the purchase order and...
What he was forced to do, a little bit too quick.
I would gladly go out and talk to all of the heads of all of the departments and explain exactly how this is working, and why it's...
Thank you, thank you, just jump together a little bit, you know, and not only my departments, but your departments. I never talked to the street department, but his department, friends with him, so...
Well, we brought it out in the, you know, at open meetings, for everyone to know that this is what we were considering to, you know, doing, and the reason why we were considering it.
And then two weeks later...
The opportunity was there for discussion, for anybody to come and, you know, discuss it, and know where to go.
I think probably a little fancy cap in it, I'm not, I need to start to throw some possibilities that could happen. If we have a major fire, or a major flashback center, or a major floodwater situation, and let's say the firemen lose two pairs of boots, two pairs of gloves, I mean, they have to have them that next day.
That would be an emergency.
I mean, you're willing to take a phone call, and I know who you are, you're that type of person. So you could give Commissioner Story an okay to purchase that, if you called her a couple o'clock at night, so we've got a serious problem here.
Yeah, we had never said, we'd said in the meeting, what is declared as emergency. I mean, they might be such smaller that you want as emergency. You know, here's where I think this all comes from. I think this all happened when we got the ice maker, that was an emergency. I don't know if it's the use of something, maybe like that. I could be wrong, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I may not have agreed, and I thought that was an emergency, because it had nothing to do with the ice machine, this only had to do with the fact that dealers came in, purchased before me, up to five hundred dollars, and sometimes we didn't even know which department to assign it to.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you all right there, I'm sticking up for my department. Whatever they want, I'm going back, trying to get...
We need to come to clarity here, we need to make it clear that Mr. Garvalia is restricted to the phone call, to the...
Well, I agree, I agree.
From anybody here.
Anybody.
With the emergency, and she's been verified, so I think we'll have to focus, whatever we need.
I agree, that's fine with me.
I mean, I don't, I think it was, you're saying that you can only spin two thick and you can't spin any over there.
Well, because there's a limit on how many emergencies we can have, can I ask that? Like when we had, I call it water office, you know, when we all had Maple Street, I mean, we were all, every commissioner was down there, we had one on, then one time we had to get a clamp, boom, we had to get another fan, boom, we had to get another fan, but, I mean, it seemed like, it was like, dear lord, how much pipe do we have in this town?
Those are the rations on the side.
That's what I'm saying, and I can't even buy one clamp, even the smallest one, not even a, when you go on your faucets, it's the house we're under. But I mean, so, I mean, that's what I want to know, it's like, I mean, I ain't calling you all hours of the night, you know, there might be a time when I'm gonna have to call you, like, boom, we just had this, because that night, it seemed like, it reminded me of whack-a-mole, got rid of one, and then, boof, here came the other, and then you got rid of that, boof, here came the other.
I think it's our morale, or our...
Yeah, I do too.
I think it's... I've been slipping, I really do.
I don't want to create any kind of a hardship, or entice us to smooth working operations of our city, or jeopardize anybody's safety or anything. I just would like more accountability, seeing that we were not in accountability, and people being responsible with their duty, the paperwork duty, you know, I mean, I know we've got a bunch of great people out there doing their jobs and working, and sometimes it's just not fun to do all the documentation and the work and all of that, but it's part of it that has to be done, and it was so lax, that there had to be something done to rein it in, and that's what was, I didn't do it on myself, it was loaded on.
Keep drinking.
New business. You gotta go to Julie first.
The first is about POs. No sense in trying to fool anybody, I've always had, or tried, another thing, you know better.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't like the idea that our chief or not talked to them. I think that's a lot of respect, we count on them for our safety, and you should give them respect. Should have made sure we go down to each office and talk to them about this, not merely this.
I'll respond to that, and I'll push back a little bit, because I knew that this discussion was gonna happen, not tonight, but I knew that it was gonna be on the agenda. I took the initiative to go to my department myself, and have that conversation with my department head, to give him a heads up, and ask him questions, and say, here's an example of where we would have had this impact. So I took that initiative. I didn't wait, I didn't wait for Kathy to do that.
I did too, if they were guilty, but that's where it is, and I think I told you that this is with the... Talked about, we should...
But if I can trust them with my faith, I can trust them with five hundred dollars as opposed to two fifty, that's just the way I feel, and I'm gonna back.
I appreciate that.
I am gonna back.
And it didn't have to be the team, because you can trust this guy to do like the bill or...
I know what you're saying, but for me, it's a kind of respect. That's it, that's all it comes down to, and I can trust them with five hundred. Another thing, Mr. Perkins, while you were gone, you know, with Bailey, I was looking up on my phone, I wanted to make sure, and I had been holding you three times, you were in that period. I wanted to thank you, because you got back to me one time in twenty-eight minutes, and the other time in thirty minutes. So you have been available, I want to make that clear. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Tom?
With all the stuff going on last meeting, this meeting, about that water barn, I think it's time for a little history lesson. Nineteen ninety-three, we've had five mayors, five commissioners, four superintendents, and I know that trash is, I should say junk, is always went up there, even the city put their junk out there, I remember whenever they gutted the old city hall of their air conditioning unit, it all went out there. So it's been a long practice, and it should have never been, to keep that place clean and neat and organized, it should have never been. Mr. Perkins needs to make sure that it remains that way, and I don't know if he needs to make a policy on it or not, but I can cut him some slack, because he's still learning. But there's been a lot of, a lot of city councils that have abused that kind of place up there, they really have. And on Kathy, this car had a responsibility, and wanting people more accountable and everything. We had a little incident back whenever I was head operator, I knew it was gonna happen, so I went straight to the commissioner, and went straight to the superintendent. I relayed the thing every single week for like four or five weeks, trying to get something done, and whenever it came to day that we had a time-sensitive, expensive project came up, with our number one digestress, went up there and vacuum truck had never been cleaned. It cost us forty-eight hours on a time-sensitive project. Now you had talked to the superintendent whenever he left, and said, perfect employee. I can't grant him that, because he put me, I ended up going into that tank and cleaning it myself, just covered and just nasty everything, and when he finally showed up, and we had the thing cleaned out, he said, what happened? I said, I've asked you every single week to get this job done, because I know it was gonna, it was gonna be that way. And he said, well, he said, I thought the guys were gonna do it. At that time there, I would have fired the superintendent, and if I could have got a recall on the commissioner, I would have done it. In today's dollars, that would probably have been a seventy thousand dollar project act, and it was shut down. Time-sensitive, and it was shut down. So whenever I'm looking at everything, I don't get onto the men, the men take their direction from the commissioner and from the superintendent. So whenever you're wanting something done, if the superintendent doesn't have it done within a four-time period, he needs to be dealt with. Now, Craig Key's been a short timer, but like I said, I'm dealt with, golly, too many commissioners to even count, but this has been going on since nineteen ninety-three, with that actual property. And I would think that you need a policy preventing any kind of personal, I've seen boats up there and everything else, any kind of personal vehicle, crafts, equipment, whatever, if it's personal, it shouldn't be there. And if they, you should keep the public from dumping their junk up there, whether it's for soda or not. I do not, I've never thought that it's too good to use city equipment, city manpower, backhoes and all that to load up junk from the public, take out there and cash in, unless it goes to the city coffers, whether it's ten cents, or ten dollars, or a hundred dollars. There, I think I covered everything. Oh, one last thing, and whenever this time-sensitive job was there, you know who I was talking about for superintendent, that was Mr. Schultz.
Okay.
The lead man at that time sat right over there where Mr. Meschitz was, for twelve years, he was the lead man. So, I mean, whenever you're saying responsibility, you need to bring everything out on responsibility.
Thank you.
I am a public person, I'm concerned.
Pardon me?
A public health concern.
Okay.
My name is Ms. Matisse, Mayor, Councilman, I live sixteen North First Street, I call Mr. Meschitz, he's lying, I, we have speakers, I mean, they fly down our road, we have no I, we have speeders, I mean, they fly down our our road. We have no sidewalk, so that's a house. We we take care of our grandchildren. My husband is disabled. You can't walk in front of our street without a driver wanting to hit you. Just less than a week ago, my husband and grandchild were walking right in front of our house.
I have no sidewalk.
No sidewalk, and then we, he had jumped away with our two-year-old grandchild because the person came directly at us. And we had many different times, first Eva, leave yourself, Mr. Messerschmidt, but I spoke to you, you said you'd come down and look at it. We had, um, right in front of our home, it was twenty mile an hour time. It says school on the top of it. But there was also a twenty mile an hour time that somebody plowed over and has never moved it back up again. Matter of fact, it's hard to see this.
Yeah, I will look for that sign this week after you phone city call.
And, um, on Joplin Street, which is right east to west, we're on the, the east side of it, it's twenty miles an hour. Crystal, Fairland, Glendale, all of them, if you look at them from Joplin Street, they all say twenty miles an hour. But yet, you have people running from Bailey Lane to Joplin trying to get to Main, and they're going way more than twenty miles an hour. We have on our camera, that you can see it, my husband's got it on his phone, the wind behind is the car, we caught on the camera, this is still camera. They are going so fast, and not just my own grandchild, but somebody else's child, if they get in front of a car speeding the house any even, because there's no sidewalk there, so they have to get out into the road, they're probably get hit, and the son's child is gonna get killed. And I called, we called the cops, and that's the other thing. We get called, called, did that, did that, got a license number. At sixty miles plus, just gonna get a license number. And then we say, well, if somebody doesn't get out here and do something, we can get the name, the color, all this stuff, and they're coming twenty minutes later. Where's the car gonna be at in twenty minutes? I think you can make it from Main Street to Walmart, the life at Walmart, in less than a minute. You can get down a road about an hour and a minute. Where are you gonna be at? You can be in Benton, Franklin, Frankford, you can be getting there to many, but I'm scared. I'm, I can't, but you can put a fence, have a blind fence, that's small, they're colored or thin, but to let our grandchild play outside, into which we never go outside without her anyway, to her, by the first touch. But if you're there, what if she ever got out, or somebody else's child gets out? What's the purpose of going back? And we asked repeatedly with Mr. Messerschmidt, you told me you don't want this to be unfair because you scrape the roads when it's winter time. It's true, I lived there purposely, I've never seen you like scrape this winter time. You guys go down the school, the school bus route, but Crystal Street is not a school bus route. There's only two, like Fairland Street, that's a school bus route, and all the children go there. So how come if you don't scrape it, in all due respect, why can't I have one? And why can't you sign because that's us?
Because, you mentioned the sign, you didn't go to the sign.
And I mentioned to you months ago, the first time I mentioned it to you, and I've been calling since then without no reply. And so I finally, well, my husband nearly got plowed over by a two-year-old.
I was, I brought it for the cops' attention, and they told me that no matter what evidence I had at that time, if they don't physically see it, there's nothing they can do.
He's right.
But how can, like, it's twenty minutes later.
So if my child, I run over, there's.
He cannot take your word for something that he did not see.
I understand.
He's right.
I understand that by what you're describing, how how can you still not come for twenty minutes? How can you do it?
Well, they're probably not gonna come.
And I guess, and I respect that, but is it just one person on the call, or how many else are at a time?
What kind of day is it?
Oh, well.
Usually about when it's.
Is that two, two boys?
Get off, like the high school gets off.
We got one cop.
They use that as a drag strip.
One cop.
In the morning, when I go on the school leaves, it's a drag strip.
One cop.
To control.
Slapping.
Miles.
One cop.
How come?
Can't afford it. Can't afford it, can't afford to put them on. We got people like you complaining everywhere. I can't do nothing about it. I've got one police investigation.
I'll, I'll buy the stuff myself, but that's.
Can we, can we, can we, can we?
I'm gonna go.
You can buy the bottle, fill it.
I mind doing.
That's not my department.
So if you buy it purposely, can we put a sticker? Uh, it, I mean, we're not going to dig up the road by any means. And all, but can we go by it and that one there?
Residents, yeah, residents can't make alter, uh, operation.
Okay, okay.
No, no, operation.
Yeah, alteration, but you can't make alter, can you guys? You guys go through and fill up holes down that road, can you just put a little, just slow them down?
I know one block over the railroad tracks.
I mean, because you guys asphalt it, it's blocked down that road, can you just like dump a bunch of asphalt, just stretch the road and slow it down?
Well, we'd have to, I just can't willy-nilly do that if someone has to come through the council.
So can you cancel it with asphalt? I drive down there, asphalt gets sprinkled everywhere, it hits your car. Can you just dump it where it's, I'll even shovel it after you dump it. Just dump it so I can protect my children and somebody help yourself. I mean, they are flying down the road, and I wonder if you might have called on me for a picture or not, but the air, I mean, I'm sure you're often speeding and shot of the air from a race car, and you see that air wave underneath it. We've got pictures with the car flying by and the air waves underneath it.
They don't.
No, they're all.
I just drove it, I just drove it this last week, and there's not. And that, she had called, and I thought, well, where are those signs? And the only signs that are there are the school signs.
Well, they've not been, there was a car that plowed it over, I called, and said it's never been put back up, it laid on the side of the road until it disappeared.
And I've never been able to find where they were along that road, so I've already talked with Skinner about we need to get those signs back up. The question I didn't.
I won't show you where they were.
The question I didn't know was, was it a twenty, was it a twenty-five? I was checking with Andrews this morning, and he had said twenty-five, what he said this morning.
They're all twenty, and right in front has Head Start, which I drive for Head Start also with FPT, I drive for all of FPT.
Right, which, because that's at the school.
That's a school, it has a school zone sign there on that, but it's also a few feet back to the wall, that's a distance line, you will actually see a twenty mile street sign. If you look where ours does, our neighbor, there's only two houses, our house and the neighbor's house, they're a little small box house, where that gave it's offensive, and where the twenty dollar sign, twenty mile an hour sign is at. And then you see the sign on this side that says school. If you go to Fairland Street, just as soon as you turn off a Joplin, you'll see another twenty mile an hour sign. If you go to Glendale, same thing, and then one on Highland, I think it's just a dirt off though. But they were all twenty miles an hour time. They were never twenty-five.
Well, and they, we actually, if those are all the signs that were there, we actually need more signs than just those signs.
Yes, you do, and plus, they are faded. Now, for none of them too, still, they're, they're very faded.
Yeah, the street department's purchased some, and they're systematically going around replacing speed limit signs and stop signs that are faded.
That'd be awesome.
So that's a project that, when they're not filling potholes or, you know, solving other problems.
You you fill potholes there, and I appreciate you guys taking our attention, and all, with the rain hit, I, other than, excuse my language, please, the drug is behind my house, that that didn't get dug out, filled all that water, our backyard, our backyard looks like a mess. But, um, I just appreciate you taking out ours.
We would have to go up to look into it and just see what it would take, and what we do.
After you told me two years ago.
And I did look into, I mean, wait, wait, I've been, I've been a commissioner for seven months.
No, I've talked to Mr. Messerschmidt, is it your father that I spoke to?
I couldn't, my deputy written a council. I've been a commissioner seven months.
I spoke to someone, I'm, 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 I'm seven months, I spoke to.
Two, two years ago, it hadn't been done in one.
No, it was, it was me, it was mine, it was much mine, it was. I, I remember, I remember this, it's like you'd seen the case, there's not many of them. You hear the name, but there's not many of them. So I, I recognize the name, and I'm sorry if I said two years ago, I said seven months ago, but I'm, 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 my husband's husband's, some, a lot of people, but, um, I would love it, I said, I mean, any, yeah, if you could, if you could look into it, I would really appreciate it. Mayor, I would really appreciate if you could look into it, and congressmen, everything, commissioners, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When could I hear something? Do I have to come back to another meeting and find something out?
No.
Can I give you my number and you call it?
I have your number.
You still have my number, okay.
I do have your numbers, yes.
All right, thank you.
So we gotta figure out where with fit and stop signs, with hint man, speed limits, and speed bump is the last thing that I would do. I would be more apt to put in a stop sign in order for the speed bump.
Yeah, because the only stop sign there is, and that's on, um, I want to stay through Street. That's it. So you got several, you got like one, maybe five, four or five blocks.
Which is why I drove it, so if it's, if it's still becoming an issue, then, you know, I end up leaving, I mean, we crossed them a long time ago, but hey, screw it, let it drive through there, that's the first step.
I had sex with them at night, I ride with them, so I sit there, they make stops on the stop sign.
They, they don't ever stop there, they don't do anything. And if they're, if they're late to school, you can, they'll go from Bailey Lane, and it's a hawk, it's a straight shot. Oh, they're trying to beat the train, and they're trying to get around the train, and it's just a straight shot, too.
Sure.
But if they could, I mean, I would love to get a speed bump, and like, if you just drop down, I'll shovel it myself. I'm volunteering.
Appreciate that.
I'm volunteering, thank you.
Everybody else?
I'd like to make, address the council very briefly, I just wanted to make sure that it gets into this meeting's minutes. Commissioner Geroli, I had mentioned that we paid about thirteen hundred dollars, a little more, out of community event fund, and so I just wanted to make sure that it was perfectly clear that none of those funds come from APD, they are the general fund, excuse me. Um, those are all probably donated from our local businesses, uh, and individuals here in town who support our community events that are in part sponsored by the City of Benton, but all of those, those funds, those, those come from the general fund. Um, I also did want to point out that the city is working closely with the Grand Lake Area Turm and more, and this S3VA tournament. This is going to have a huge economic impact on our area, and so we've already been talking for a couple months together in how we can partner to make this the most beneficial for our area, for your back here after year, to just continue to have, have this tournament. Um, the Twin Oaks lot, we talked about taking care of the heating and cooling here, there's a couple other improvements that need to be made that they will address at the council later. I just wanted to let you know that since we have been putting a little bit of funds into this and marketing the market, that Twin Oaks is almost completely booked for the twenty twenty year, twenty twenty season, we run nine months out of the year, and so I was, I was really impressed by that, I don't know about you guys, but I was really, I was really tickled by that. Um, and, uh, finally, we've, we've did our first census webinar today, and that we did out with the Chicago district, which is six states, and that is basically launching off for the twenty twenty census. And what's really great about that is that's my catalyst into telling everyone that we are the recipient of a five thousand dollar grant to help promote the City of Benton in encouraging, educating for the twenty twenty census, to make sure that all of our residents are counted. So, pretty exciting as well. So, in our business.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you.
They've done it hands.
I need some direction, I think, Tommy, can you help out too, okay? Here's the deal. The same thing's been going on for about ten days. We reached agreement in principle, we have ordered title, we didn't call that stuff, title works fine, I discussed this discovery for zero assets. It's closing a set for Wednesday at ten o'clock, did that last week. I got the first experience today at three thirty, and the agreement in principle was the traditional closing, like, uh, land, uh, mineral rights, mineral rights, pro-rach attached, and I got the pro-rach attached, and I got the mineral rights seriously thirty feet by hundred and twenty. That's, it needs to go, but that's new, here, there, Mr. Banks changed those signs. So here's the deal, I'll negotiate this, and if I put it together tonight, and we're on that line, but if we can just continue this meeting and give it approval till tonight and walk on Wednesday, we can close it. Rest is gonna be closed by Thursday, Friday. Mr. Banks wanted to settle this the day we reached it in principle, you know, that's not our problem, but that's where we're at. You want me to wait two weeks?
No. I think we gave you, I think, I think that we're giving the night to them forward, assuming that the terms are met, that they're, that they're the standard terms.
This is the proof, the mayor signed the agreement.
Correct, with the same, with same terms. The same with standard, I mean, you indicate there's some, there's some mention that he may not be in agreement with standard terms, and if he comes around the standard terms, that's right. Thanks, David.
Vote. Oh, you vote.
I'll vote. Everyone's in favor, everyone's in favor.